You ready? I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners for May 10th, 2022. At this time, would you all please stand? Ms. Willanne, would you say a prayer and then we'll do the pledge?
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this morning and this day that we can come together and just conduct business for this county. I pray that you would be on each, be with each person here and just help everyone to speak with clarity and wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Willanne?
We have several additions to the agenda. Number one G is under consent request board approval of settlement participation agreement with Walgreens. Number 16, under, this is also, I think this is all section one 16, request board approval and change order number two, chip seal. Number 17, request board approval of change order number two for Indian Springs Phase 2A. Number 18 is regarding requesting setting a public hearing. Number 19, request board authorization of emergency well repair. And number 20, request board approval to revise an award of RFP 212211.
Motion that the agenda be approved and with the additions as set out.
Ms. Daniels? Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Donna Froh, second by Commissioner Fay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Now, let me just say something. We have a public meeting scheduled for 9:15 this morning. And what we're going to do is we're going into the agenda and we'll work until about 9:15. At that time, we will take up the item and that'll give some of the people here the opportunity to leave, that wants to leave, but if you want to stay, we'd love to have you stay all morning. Okay. Mr. Zach Gilmore. Good morning, Zach.
I just come to y'all to ask if the OCC will recognize this week as being Economic Development Week, presented by IEDC. The proclamation states, whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development to support communities members and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research. Gone up there, not reading here. In depth publications, public policy advocacy.
Just Tom Lauer.
My bad.
It's working now.
Is that better?
Yes.
Good deal. Okay, good deal. Do y'all want me to start over? Through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiative, initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program, the Certified Economic Developer Designation, and the Entrepreneurship Development Professional End, whereas the economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas the economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas economic developers work in Jackson County within the state of Florida. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the week of May 9th through May 13th, 2022, as Economic Development Week and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. The Jackson County Economic Development Committee, JCEDC, is the designated economic development organization for Jackson County. The Jackson County BOC fully supports the efforts of JCEDC and we appreciate all of the calculated efforts put in each and every day to fight for growth in our community and witness whereof this 10th day of May in the year of our Lord 2022. Signed by Chairman.
Chairman, let's go around to the front and get a.
I move to adopt the proclamation and authorize the chairman's aside.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fay, second by Ms. Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you all.
Ms. Judy?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here this morning to recognize the Employee of the Month for May of 2020. And that person is Ms. Sergeant Crystal Bassford from the Jackson County Correctional Facility. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Crystal Bassford began her employment with the county on January 8th, 2008, in the position of corrections officer, and now serves as a sergeant for Jackson County Correctional Facility. And she has been selected as the Employee of the Month for May of 2022 for the standards that she displays in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Sergeant Bassford is an exemplary employee who demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces, her loyalty and commitment to Jackson County are noticed and admired by her coworkers. Sergeant Bassford is very dependable. She always puts the needs of her staff members that work for her first. She goes above and beyond to ensure staff receive the training they need to be successful in their duties. And whereas Sergeant Bassford is a dedicated employee that handles issues that arise timely and efficient, she is able to handle stressful situations and always remains professional when dealing with public agencies and citizens. She has built trust with her coworkers and they know they can count on her. Sergeant Bassford always has a smile on her face and exhibits a positive attitude when conducting tasks, no matter the circumstances. Sergeant Bassford sets a good example for other employees with her work ethic and has proven to be a valuable asset to Jackson County Correctional Facility. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County Florida commends and congratulates Sergeant Crystal Bassford on her selection as Employee of the Month for May 2020.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Fay.
I move to approve Sergeant Bassford as Employee of the Month for May 2020. Authorize a check in the amount of $200 and adopt the proclamation.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fay, second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Okay. All of you have received the agenda. You've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda items. Are there any questions? So good, hearing none? So I have a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donna Froh. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Anthony Carpini? Well, for a country boy, I'm fairly close. Come on up.
Hey, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Anthony Carpini. I represent the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. I'm here today seeking to conduct a regional broadband planning project under funding from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, the Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant for fiscal year 2223. The purpose of this project is to create a regional technology planning team to help counties align their broadband efforts with state and federal efforts so that counties are better positioned to access funding for broadband infrastructure creation and expansion. The project will also result in a regional broadband plan. The Appalachian Regional Planning Council is seeking $56,000 to conduct this regional project. There is no funding match is required and therefore there will be no financial impact on the county. For the grant application, the Appalachian Regional Planning Council is only seeking a letter of support. This letter places no constriction or commitments on the county. The ARPC appreciates your consideration.
Go move. Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir. Zach Gilmore.
Morning again.
Morning.
I'm here to request approval for this project's weakness MOU that was included in your packets. When, is there any questions about it or would you like me to read it or?
I don't have any questions. You guys have questions?
We talked about it before.
Where's Hunter? Is he in here? Hunter Fox? Ms. Daniels, did the bids come back on that roof?
Yes.
Did the bids come in on the roof?
They did, yes, sir.
They did?
They did, yeah. Lowest one, I think it's like 299,000 plus 300,000.
How many, how many square foot is in that building, approximately? 10,000?
Just a shade under.
$300 square foot? How many beds do we get? Who was the bidder?
There were two that were right, really close to each other. I think it was, I think construction was one and forgot the name of the other ones, but I can find out.
We just got them, was Thursday?
Yeah, yes, you did.
Thursday.
Oh, yes, last week.
So what was the mile on that?
Two nine.
Two nine.
What?
What was the square footage on the, what was the square footage?
Just a shade under 10, if I remember correctly.
The building?
It was just around 9 to 10, somewhere near, yes, sir.
What, what type of roof system did we bid on it, you know?
Yeah, I can send you the previous report.
Single ply membrane or?
Standing seam?
Yeah, it's a metal roof.
Is it a metal roof? So it's a, we put a retrofit on it, basically? Because it's a, it was a low slope roof originally. And it may have been retrofitted.
It had a middle roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. What happened? Storm blew off a piece of tin and it just kept peeling it like an onion. But.
What, what's the funding source of this? It's gonna be the, the money from Governor Scott?
That's what, potentially.
Probably cares or.
He can bring out more info at special meetings. He can gather, we're not ready to award it, I don't think.
Just the agreement for the individual to come in, but I did want to know if the bid to come in, come back.
I, I'd like to see what's, the specific system that we, we actually bid out. Sounds like that's a fairly high price. There may be an alternative system that we can use to get those prices down. I just like to be aware, you know? Look at it and see what.
Okay. It's a pleasure of the board.
I guess, let me ask one more question on this, this is.
Don't run off, Hunter.
There's a minimum of, minimum of three years on this contract that we're looking at. You said 10,000 square foot? Is that 10,000?
Yes, sir, it'd be 18 to $20,000 a year in your account.
Three years minimum.
Yes, sir.
And employees?
Um, we don't know exactly. It's probably gonna be around two to four. Possibly more.
Obviously, five to 10.
Well, I mean, that was, that was.
But two, they're gonna be renting this at 20, about at $20,000 a year.
Right, correct, yes, sir.
Which would take 10 years, just to keep the money on the roof.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think that there may be an alternate system that we could look at bidding instead of putting a metal roof on there, maybe go to a single ply, which we could get basically the same warranty and guarantee that we can with a metal roof and may be able to be done quite a bit less expensive.
Would you get with Hunter and y'all take a look at that? All right. This is just.
And those jobs, it's probably two to four on site plus some drivers. We don't know the exact amount of drivers just yet.
Processing center.
But we don't renegotiate this square footage price, I think.
Yeah. I got a motion back of Mr. Hill, second back of Mr. Fay.
So we will renegotiate this after the two or three years, minimal, correct?
Sure. Yes, sir, we sure can, of course, yes.
Well below standard average on square foot price.
I think this is the price that they're talking for Blue Sky.
Okay.
There was a study done for Blue Sky previously, and so that's what we used.
The Blue Sky is what we bring in, 58 of 40, correct?
Correct, that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all very much.
It's none, yes. Okay. How many people do we have in here who are here for the development that's going to take place at Peacock Bridge? Okay. All right. Ms. Amber, it's showtime. Come on.
Mr. Chairman, you can go ahead and do that first item in public hearing. I don't think it'll take but a minute unless you want to switch them around.
Which one is?
The large-scale text amendment.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead with the large-scale text amendment, Ms. Amber. And then we'll do we're in public hearing.
All right, this is the request to consider adoption of a new private property rights element to the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan per Florida Statute 163317765. On May the 2nd, 2022, the planning commission recommended adoption to the Board of County Commissioners. Let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a new property rights element, providing for an effective date.
Okay, is there anyone here or against the change in this large-scale amendment? Brad, do you have anyone online?
If anyone online would like to speak for or against this item, then may you use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine if joined via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you. Okay, we are out of public hearing. Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Fay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Now we are going to discuss the development at Peacock Bridge.
Right, this is the request for a general.
We're back in public hearing? You've got ahead of me. Go ahead.
Request for a general development order for a 3,200 square foot convenience store, including a future fueling stations and a liquor store to be known as Peacock Bridge Store, including 22,785 square feet of vehicular use area and sidewalks. The proposed store will be located on the northwest corner of Highway 71 South and Peacock Bridge Road in unincorporated Jackson County. On April the 18th, 2022, the planning commission recommended denial to the Board of County Commissioners based on being an inappropriate use of the property.
Okay. Is there anyone here or, or against who wants to speak? If you speak, I will give you three minutes to speak. State your name for the record and spell it.
Reuben Bontrager. Picture's gone, okay. On that picture, I live right directly across Highway 71, where he's gonna put the liquor store. The destroyed house, which is no longer destroyed, thank God, is right directly across where the little sign says. Destroyed, you see where the destroyed house is? The back part's the barn is destroyed. The front part of the light is what was left of the house. But we, we fixed it all back and thank God we were safe through the storm. We greatly oppose the site of Chappelle's Convened Liquor Store. Understand the county's position of needing development growth. And I appreciate Chappelle trying to bring development, but it is in the wrong location. There are 80 families and raising, living and raising families within one mile radius of the proposed, proposed site. I've been speaking with many of the families and I found one in the community that desire the liquor store or the convenience store. I've gathered over 50 signatures requesting that the development order be denied. I'm asking permission to hear the voice of the community that we are adamantly against the convenience and liquor store being brought to our community. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you. Not at this point. Anyone else want to speak for or against? Come forward, sir. State your name and spell it for the record.
Stephen Lowery. S.D.E.V.E.M.L.O.W.E.R.Y. I lived on Highway 77, halfway between Graceville and Chipley. Mr. Chopin bought the rundown liquor store there. Before he even opened that store, he went door to door and asked all the residents. He wanted to be a good neighbor. Did they oppose the liquor store opening? Told him I didn't care either way, you know? If you want liquor, get it. If you don't, don't. He's been a great neighbor. He developed the business responsibly. There's been no, that store had been broken into several times, as the sheriff can testify to, when it was abandoned because they left the old stock in there. That brings crime. Yeah, I don't want two years anyhow. Since the store has opened, is paying taxes, it's employing citizens, it has affected no one there. My neighbor across the street was strongly opposed to it. Doesn't bother her at all that the business is open. He developed it responsibly. He even adopted the highway for two miles above and below that property because he was worried about litter. You know, you can't control people throwing trash weight. He does things the right way. You go in that store or any of his stores, he does not sell rolling papers. He does not sell those little glass pipes with a flower in them that people like turn into crack pipes. He refuses to sell that stuff, you know? If you, you can't stand in the way all the time, a business, you know? And putting in a bait shop and all too would be a boon right there at Peacock Bridge landing. I think it would benefit the community in the long run. He develops responsibly and he's always been a good neighbor and a good friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're next. Good morning.
Hi. My name is Janice DuBois. I live, sorry, J.A.N.I.C.E. DuBois, D.U.B.O.I.S. And I've lived in Marianna for the past 14 years. I moved here from Baltimore, Maryland. Quite a difference. I fell in love with it. In fact, all my neighbors are also transplants from other states. We love the area. We love the quiet. 71 is a busy road. And where the proposed location for the liquor store is directly parallel to a right turn lane that the majority of the trucks from Florida Rock, Dolmey, take huge loads. They come up crest over a slate hill and then suddenly you're there. The right turn lane is not shown on the drawing. Very well, I can see, but I and my neighbors who couldn't all be here because they work are very opposed to this project. We love our area. We love the quiet. We don't want the possible trouble that a liquor store at that location could bring. We've already had fatalities on that road every single year. And I for one am so opposed and I'm glad that he is a good neighbor. Hopefully he can find good neighbors elsewhere. It would have saved a lot of time and effort had he gone door to door in our area to find out if, you know, we, the citizens, the residents of Marianna, wanted that in our area. Obviously, most of us don't. Thank you very much.
What road do you live on?
I live on Newville Lane, which is parallel, come out Alliance Road, and there's 71 right there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Marianna.
Good morning.
I'm Chris Hutten, C.H.U.T.T.O.N. I recently moved home here from Ohio. So, OH, anybody? No? I'm, I'm an employee of the Chapots. They're very, very family-oriented people. We're not looking to bring a liquor store down here to bring anything in more than glasses of wine after a drink. This isn't something they're trying to do to pull the community down. We're looking at a convenience store in a liquor store across Oak Park. I know, the store I work out with them in, Potsdeleone, is very clean, very well run. There's no drift raft. There's no standing around the building. Everything is very, very clean. It's just a, a better commerce, bringing something into the district. We're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I ain't drunk, I'm just old. I was up here the next beat, last beating, tinging to this thing. I made it clear to everybody listening that I was opposed to public liquor sales.
What's your name?
Jim Young. I've been living on that corner for 50 years. Jim, you ought to know me. I even voted for you one time.
Thank you, sir.
But that don't mean nothing today. I'm still opposed to liquor sales. And that would make me about as two-faced as you could get not to be, to be, not to be opposed to a liquor store coming in my front yard. I don't have anything against anybody yet. Don't make any promises. But my word is my word. I'm against liquor sales to the public anywhere. That means I'm against a liquor store being put in my front yard. It won't make no difference in my yard. But if my feelings about it, it will make a difference. I am opposed to the liquor store.
So, now where do you live? Is it right on that corner of where those?
Straight across from where you got the beer and drink.
Yeah, you're on the south side.
Right there where those buildings are?
Second half from 71, right?
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else for or against? Yes, sir.
I'm Ronnie Atkins. I live on the Lance Road about 100.
I live on Alliance Road about half a mile, Highway seventy-one. And my belief of that intersection, as has already been mentioned, is extremely dangerous already with the Dolmire trucks and the heavy traffic that crosses the particular intersections. I don't know, it probably took us fifty years to get a turn lane right there on that road to make it safer so I can see how a convenience store would improve that situation. The number of people that live in that community, other than there's through traffic going through there, I don't see how it could possibly support the store there to begin with when you only live you're seven miles south of the interstate there from Walmart and all the other stores on Highway seventy-one, the intersection of I-ten there. And what I understand, there's some work still going on with the boat landing there at Peacock Bridge. And I don't see how this liquor store, convenience store, how that would really benefit the problems that obviously already had there with the boat landing and the debris that's scattered around down there. So anyway, it's just a situation there where you got a hill on both sides of the intersection coming down toward that particular intersection. Like the lady had mentioned, the Dolmire trucks coming from the north. You have a hill coming from the south, just as you cross Calhoun County line into Jackson County. And then you go down for Florida, a fairly steep hill. And you got a bridge right there where Saint Creek is at and all all the traffic congestion and everything that possibly will come from the convenience store there is just gonna make a dangerous situation even worse, in my opinion. And the people in that community like the area, like the quiet. I don't know what the store hours might have been mentioned from the convenience store, but it's like most convenience stores, it's gonna be a seven-eleven type thing. So you're gonna have, more than likely, I don't know for sure, but more than likely, it's gonna be later at night and the people in that area just, I just don't think they would really appreciate traffic and the noise and comes along with the store, any kind of store. After nine, ten o'clock at night. I'm opposed to it. And I just, I just don't think it's a real good idea and I just don't think that community can support right there. So that's my take on it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Newell, F K T H Y N E U B I L L E. You can tell I'm not a polished speaker whatsoever. I'd like to have you take note. The only people who have not opposed this that have come up to speak are people who do not live anywhere near where this store will be. Every resident in this area has come up to tell you why they do not want this. And I have to agree with them on every part of it. I live on Alliance Road. The other point I'd like to make, other than because so many people have made the points that we need to bring out to you, is the one lady who works at the store, no, I'm sorry, the other gentleman, who is a resident around the other store on seventy-seven, said, there's been numerous break-ins in that store and there's never been a problem, he's taking care of it. There is no way I want a building, a business, that is the most likely to be broken into in our area. And liquor stores are one of the number one for robberies. That brings in a bad element to an area that's far away from the police department. If you want us to bring our own guns in, more power to you. But do you really want that element? We don't. We've lived, my husband and I have lived here over twenty-five years, moved from Fort Myers to get to the country. We don't feel like moving again now. We really would not like this in our area. We hope you take a strong consideration for what the people in our area have told you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. No, which one? Whoever's waving, are you, okay, you're next. I couldn't, I can't see you because of the podium.
I'm Jody Nelson. I just moved in to, on Highway seventy-one in November, at the end of November. And I left Panama City Beach. And I moved there because of the quiet, because of the peacefulness, because of a lot of the people. People here are so nice. And I left the riffraff and the elements that things of this nature bring. And I'm not opposed to drinking and I'm not opposed to liquor sales at all. But I am in my neighborhood where people are trying to raise their children and we, we're just happy with things the way they are in our neighborhood. So as a new resident, I'm very opposed to it.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see you back there. Between the lectern and Jabbo, I couldn't see you.
Yes, my name is Fred Gaynor. I live in the area on Styles Lane. That's F R A D G A I N E R, right? I believe that I'm in favor of the store coming in the community because, as you know, in this world, we have all sorts of conditions that's going on and there's a supply chain disruption. Gasoline is going up. So if we had this in the community, I believe it would be advantageous to all the people that live there. So we about progression. We're not trying to stand in the way of someone or the community progresses. So we're all in favor of this. We believe that, like I said, would be advantageous to all the people. So if they think in terms of economic development, well, this is the way we can improve the area. So there's already trucks coming in the area, so we already have traffic. So I don't think the store would disrupt traffic or anything by that nature. So thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. You and the, sir, you come up first, I know Mr. Delong. I'll let you speak and
Yes, sir.
We'll probably have questions for you.
That's right. So Tori Duncan, I'm sure most of y'all know me here. My, my family's been here for a hundred years, was on business here and everything like this right here. I live right on the corner, Peacock and seventy-one on the south side, okay? So I'm definitely opposed to the liquor store coming in. He's came around to me and he did come to door to door, but he told me something. He told me the liquor store, I'm gonna tell you that much right now. There's a, there's a lot of things that I don't approve of, that's a lie, okay? He could have told me straight. But my grandparents own that piece of property right there and it got needed to be, okay? My granddad ran the Henry River for fifty years, okay? There's the river that comes right through there, through Chappas property, our old piece of property that was on the other side of Chappas, Styles Lane. So a liquor store is not that, it's not, it's not, it's not right, it's not the, the way, it's not our people that lived down there forever. We've had a place there since nineteen forty-seven, okay? My grandmother would roll her grave right now to know there's a liquor store coming there. Ellen Duncan, I want to say right now, that was the most Christian woman that I've ever known. And the most, I mean, one of the most best women in this world, okay? And she was my grandmother. I'm gonna stand here, I'm gonna say that. I don't, I don't want this done. I got my kids there on the corner. That turn lane they put in there is the worst thing they ever done. I watched a little girl get killed in my, in my yard. My son had to see it, okay? So there's a lot more things going on there than just whatever. I've seen more accidents since I turned around there. And we're gonna see a lot more, okay? And I got my kids out there. I'm gonna stand up for, I'm gonna stand up for family, I'm gonna stand up for my community. We have, that's, that's, that's us, okay? And I know that, hey, y'all got, y'all got a vote to make, but I'm not even gonna be happy with it or I'm not gonna be happy with it, right? So, you know, if y'all turn it his way, I'm not gonna be happy with it. And, and that's just, that's me. I'm here for my community, I'm here for my family, and I'm here for, to oppose whatever he's got going on. He lied to me and that's there, okay? I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Delong? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we also do have hands up on Zoom.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna finish in here and then we'll take the ones online.
I'm Ron Player, I live down Duncan Ridge Road. It's a F L E E N E R. And a member of the community, we're opposed to it down the other way. It's a dead-end road. We live eight tenths of a mile from there and I don't know if y'all notice or not, but there's health wanted signs all over Jackson County. So I don't know how they're gonna employ somebody. It's an intersection, it's a bad intersection anyway. And there's already health signs everywhere. But I just don't think we need it, I don't need it. Nervous Red, never done this before, first time in a meeting period.
We're just local people.
We're just, the small community we got, we don't need any extra riffraff. I mean, we're just dummy. We all live in the country, to live in the country. Out there's not, five miles down the road to the south and then eight miles, you got one more. Sunshine Spirits, Rock Road. Liquor store is not needed. Made in tackle at Rocky Creek. We just don't need another store.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Morning.
Good morning, Joseph.
Joseph Alliday, Alliday How Engineering. I'm not the engineer record on the project, Brad Reed is. Brett lives, I think, what, four miles from there. He was excited about it when Chilpan first came to us. The property is act to, you guys saw that in the staff report, which encourages neighborhood commercial at intersections. Chilpan came to us about the project, he also went to the county. And the zoning fit, so he moved forward with the development and permitting. We've done stormwater, we put up landscaping, which I think is optional now, is that right? And we've done a traffic analysis that shows that no right or left turn lanes are warranted. So from a development perspective, I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have. Go from there.
Well, we're in public hearing right now, Joseph. We'll call you back up. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Chilpan. Now, Mr. Chilpan, you don't have to get close to that mic, I'm hard of ear.
Chilpan.
Turn the mic up so you
I'm not used to with those things, so yeah, sorry. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I believe county is ready to celebrate the economic development. Just heard from Gilmore, Mr. Gilmore. Anyway, starting with I have started five businesses, which were rundown. You can see the pictures I have given to you. Always followed the law. ID, no violation, nothing. Check the area is liable or legal to run through the business. I'm meeting all state county requirements, I believe. It's not close to any school, not close to any church, it's way away. It is a busy location, it's not a quiet location. I don't agree, anyone says it's a quiet location. Intersection of Peacock and Savymore, day and night busy locations, day and night. Safety. I heard a lot of things about safety. This property was used to be a Dolmire mine, seventy-feet-deep mine. No accident I heard about, none. They were blasting, lot of traffic moving. I don't know how, the time, those neighbors are proving or whatever, before I buy the land, I went through everything. This land was used to be a mine, busy industry in my opinion. Lot of people had a issue. Well, had the issue. I heard houses were shaking, vibrating when they're doing blasting. There wasn't any issue, in my opinion. I bought the land, I invested a lot of funds, a lot of money. I tried to invest money in my county, that's what my intent to develop. You can see my record, you have five pictures, the stores I developed. They generating income, no violation. I don't agree that liquor store has a lot of violation. If you go Sunshine Liquor or Ralph seventy-seven Liquors or Fortune Liquors, the state's highest lottery seller, I am proud to open that store. Sheriff's Department takes thirty-five minutes to reach that location. We didn't have a problem. Fifteen hundred, two thousand people sometimes visiting that store. I was able to manage without going to that store. I was working in Jacksonville and managing the store legally, everything I did right. Yes, I'm an alien, I came legal in this country. I haven't crossed the border illegally, no sir. I'm a legal migrant, I'm a citizen. I haven't born here, I'm gonna die here. I haven't born, but I'll die here, that's for sure. Any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Well, we'll probably call you back up in a minute.
Of course, thank you, sir, thanks for that.
Anyone else? Okay, Fred?
If anybody would like to speak for or against, they may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine if via telephone. We've got one hand up, a Mr. or Mrs. Wildbilly.
Fred, make sure they spell their name for the record. Sir, hang on a minute, we're doing people online. I'll get you in a minute. Go ahead, Fred.
Wildbilly, please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is William Harlow and the address is nine-three-seven State Road seventy-one South. And it's a five-O-one-C-three religious charitable organization called The Shepherd's Rest Incorporated that my wife and I started about six years ago.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, my, my, I have met, actually I have talked to Mr. Chopin several times. And I'm especially concerned about the liquor store portion of what he is doing. And I don't think, especially with us building a respite retreat, we've got the final permitting, working with Amberne and her team or the people there and before Wilma. And, you know, we're proceeding with building a respite retreat for ministers. And I'm just concerned that this kind of business so close, if he wants a convenience store, I think that's a good compromise, like I said, a bait shop or something. But the liquor store portion of this, I don't believe is gonna be helpful at all for our local community in Saint Creek.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Fred, do you have anyone else?
If there's anybody else that would like to speak for or against, they may raise their hand now.
Okay, we're gonna take one gentleman that's in the audience here, if anyone happens to raise their hand, Fred. Sir, come, come back up. Say your name and spell it for the record.
My name is Tom Broe, B R O W E. It's fifty-three-ten Alliance. I live on the dead-end portion of Alliance, we're across the seventy-one. So I'm real close to the proposed development. I love the rural area. We already have too much traffic that takes the dead-end road and comes down. And I cannot see, and I've seen accidents on, you know, on seventy-one and Alliance and on Peacock. I like my solitude, as everybody here does. And I'm totally against it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
I've got petitions, we're right.
Give them to Ms. Daniels.
Listen.
Is it the same one we've got or is it? Isn't the same one, okay, very good, thank you. Okay, Fred, do you have anyone?
I don't see any more hands.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak for or against? All right, we're out of public hearing. Okay, Ms. Amber. You want to You want to, uh? You, I think. Okay, I wanna ask, I wanna ask Joseph and Mr. Shilpan, I got questions for both of you. Uh, Joey, would you pick, put up the diagram again of the, uh, location? So this proposed business, where will it be located?
Do you have a pointer?
No, I don't, I don't have a pointers.
Hey, we got TV, we, we ain't got that.
It's in the bottom right corner, with the blue mark in there, in the bottom right here.
So, you see the house across the street?
I do.
Um, and I, I believe the store is gonna be directly across from here. And then the driveway connection will pretty much line up with the driveway connection for that house.
So, to the north.
Yeah.
Joseph, in their packets, on page one thirty-nine, there's a star, just to make sure y'all.
So the, uh, the store is lining up, is it going to be on the corner? Or is it off the corner?
It'll be a little bit off the corner.
How much is a little?
Can you pull up, look at Joey, Joey can talk.
Yeah, look at that star.
I don't have your site.
It's in your book on page, um, one forty.
Okay, I got you.
Not legible.
Yeah, but, I mean, do they have a corner in there?
Joseph, it's Joey.
Joey, Joey's got a corner, I mean, I, I, I wish would you get it where the audience could see, as a matter of fact, it'd probably be better to point to them than it would be.
Yeah. So?
It looks like.
The driveway must be across from Mr. Bontrager, but the store. That's what.
Further off, is that right?
Mr. Bontrager, the, uh, the drive starts where your drive's at, but the store is a little bit, is closer.
And believe, and believe, little bit south of his drive.
A little bit south.
And I forgot, we, can I say something, which I forgot to convey?
Sure.
That is not right, that I haven't met the neighbors.
You're close to my, just hang on.
I met most of the neighbors close to this location. I have an adjoining property owner neighbor here. I have given you sign papers petition by neighbors, they live on seventy-one, they on Alliance Road, they live close. So, that is not right that I haven't met the neighbor.
You got something you can show us, Joseph?
But they don't want, they don't want to speak publicly, they don't want some here, most of the people, they want to avoid the children.
Mr. Shilpan, um, you were talking about, or Mr. Lowery was saying, the break-ins, just want to clear that up, that was when you did not own the store. Right, it was vacant?
Yes.
There's, not any break-ins?
Never break up, nothing.
That's why, I just want to clear that up.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, how far is it?
From the house, right, just from here to, is that? Buildings over here. The driveway.
Mr. Bontrager, where in relation to this building?
So, you got, this is the turn lane, alright, this is, we had to be north of that turn lane. So if you look at aerial photo, you can, you can see right where his driveway comes in, that's where that turn lane starts.
Have Joey zoom in, Joey, zoom in on that picture, please. Yeah, just several time, mainly, mainly in front of Mr. Rubens' house, there on the east side of seventy-one, please.
That, you know, this is a landscape plan here, and you can see, which I think it's now.
Very, that's good, thank you. One more, go, go, go one more zoom.
One more zoom.
Other, okay, not, not, back, back one. But, they're, they're right there, legal right there.
But we, we all propose a landscaping in, in the front, to kind of buffer any kind of vehicle lights or anything like that. And I think for stormwater purposes, it's just in, to, because the low point is over, over here near, uh, Peacock Bridge Road. And to have a store up there, so it was just seat plug to the barn.
Joseph, you had mentioned that, you're correct, our landscape requirements are no longer mandatory, but are voluntary. And I was actually opposed to that, I thought we should have kept those as a requirement of, or comprehensive plan, as our development regulations. But you did say that, uh, you will incorporate, uh, landscaping, uh, as far as a buffer.
No.
Does that show up yet?
Yes, we, we did have landscaping along the frontage, which meets what the home requirement was. Um, it was basically shrubs to block any kind of vehicle lights, and then you had trees every. How many feet, Brett, you know? Every fifty feet, uh? Yeah, every fifty feet.
I've got a question. Uh, this, this question I don't have, it's kind of unusual, I don't ask the audience, I, I've got, I've plugged in everyone's name that, that spoke here. How many of y'all are against it being liquor, convenience or just convenience? So if I had a poll, y'all, if you, if I had to say, how many of y'all would be alright if it was just a convenience store without the liquor aspect? And I think liquor may be a broad term, because I think liquor license is stated in Florida, but liquor licensing, and most, a lot of them just sell beer. So I, I wouldn't exclude that. But is there an opposition to a convenience store as much as it is with attachment of liquor? Okay, so both of y'all, y'all both.
I'll love it.
Okay. Okay, I just want, I just want to clear, because I've heard both of them say that, that's good.
The building will sit back toward that, it looks like a drain? Is that a, some sort of a drain?
A pretty house.
Um. I don't, you're talking, you're looking at the, um, photo.
Yeah.
It, it's all black in that area, I mean, it slopes, um.
That, that's not some old drain or something there, to the rear? Not the, the clear area, but just to the, I guess, east of that.
You're talking about north and south?
Yeah.
That's just like what a bunch of those left there, that, that, the trees are.
Tree line, yeah. There's another entrance there, Peacock.
It all slopes towards the river, slowly dragging slopes to the river.
Uh. Any questions from you guys? I do for Joseph. Okay, y'all gonna have to hold it down, because we can't hear. Joseph, we've heard from all, a lot of the residents about the danger there at the intersection. Has the DOT looked at that? Is that a concern of the, I mean, we know that there's concerns every time there's a fatality or a wreck. Has that been looked at as possible caution light or something? I'm, whether there's anything there, has that been looked at?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Well.
You know, they, you know, that turn lane was put in, they probably know. How many years ago? Yeah, so.
Well, that, I mean, that was my concern, everybody's saying it's so dangerous there, but DOT, but DOT. That's their road there, uh, seventy-one, so.
I, I'll answer your question, kind of, I actually, uh, met with a couple of the citizens down there a while back, concerned about the death, the, one of them's grandmother of the child that perished there by the bus. And I reached out to DOT, and I'll read this for the record, this is the email was sent to me in response to a request, I had to look at that. Thank you for the content of Florida Department of Transportation, regards, uh, State Route Seventy One in the intersection, uh, Peacock Bridge Road in Jackson County. Safety is a top priority for the department, and we appreciate the opportunity to address your concern. Based on your requests, our Office of Traffic Operations has now completed, uh, completed a review of the intersection. As onsite review of this location determined that the adequate side distance over a thousand feet for this location. In addition to the onsite review, the analysts included review of these roadway features, included post signage's, the traffic volumes and speeds, side, side distance, roadway geography, and the latest five year study of crash history. In the review indicated that there was, has been six collisions within the past five years of this location. And one of them resulted in the fatality of the injury. Based on this review, our office has issued a task order for the District Three Maintenance Department, which covers DOTs, covers this area, which Clint is very familiar with. For, to clear vegetation encroachment, no further modifications will be recommended this time. Thank you for your re- recommendations and looking out for the common citizen. And that is, uh, from, uh, Brian Pettis, Traffic Operations, Traffic, uh, Service Manager out of Chipley. I want to share that for the record, I know he had sent that, and there have been concerns of the grandmother, uh, the lady that, uh, the young lady that perished that Sunday afternoon in that collision, actually bought the car, and she died in, for her to go to college. And I said, uh, taught her extensively about this safety issue down there. Uh, but I wanted y'all, as a public, to realize that DOT, we have no jurisdiction over it, as Clint mentioned, but DOT has done their five year traffic study, look back at all the traffic crashes, uh, on FHP's reports, any other complaints, they compiled that, so I just want to share that for the record.
This might be something, whether anything goes there or not, that maybe we need to, uh, get the DOT again, maybe a safety project there.
Well, I, yeah, I'll go ahead and say this, because I think we need to put this issue to bed. Um, I'm a big proponent of property rights, and I think that this, if I'm not done mistaken, Amber, this development is in compliance with a comprehensive plan. And all of the motion that the development ought to be approved.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Because I have questions.
A second.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Donna Froth, got a second by Commissioner Bay. Um. I still, I still think, uh, there's some questions that need to be answered, and for my certification, you know, I know Mr. Bontrager's house is directly across the way. I would not want somebody flashing lights in my house till ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night. I would think that, uh, some sort of a barrier, some sort of a, uh, buffering that's gonna be high enough to obstruct the view or reorient the building, so that when people pull in, they're not pulling and flashing their lights toward his house. Uh, you know, that, to me, and I don't know, you say you talked to some of the neighbors, obviously there was a lot of them you didn't get to, uh, and, you know, Ms. Willanne, I would like for you to make sure that Mr. Shilpan gets a printed copy of our comprehensive land development plan. Uh, so that in the future, he is aware that, uh, when he goes and buys these pieces of property, he knows what he's got to do, and, uh, you know, there's no guarantee that we're going to approve or disapprove this. And you buying it doesn't guarantee that, because it's still, it's up to this board to decide. So I want to make sure you are aware of what's going on. But, uh, I think there are some things that could be done to make it more palatable to the community. Uh, the thing that concerns me is future gas service. I, and they said they don't want it there anyway, but a convenience store, we hear this on these Dollar Generals. Uh, the one in Dalewood, before it came online, they, everybody was against it. Now, if you try to take it out, they will hang you. Same thing with the one out here on Caverns Road. People are against them. Uh, so, you know, the fuel aspect of it, more of a convenience store aspect, uh, I think, uh, would be more compatible with the neighborhood. Uh, the liquor side of it, I'm like the lady who spoke, I'm not opposed to liquor or anything like that. But, I, uh, I think there's some things that can be done to mitigate this process, to make the neighbors more receptive to having it. And I know we've got a motion, uh, so that's just where I'm at right now. Uh, I think you need to go back to the drawing board, get with your neighbors, see what can be done to resolve the issues that are out there.
And, and again, I, you know, I put a motion in the floor, because I, I think that this commission has indicated with a lot of their past active actions, that we are in favor of growth. I think everybody's in favor of growth in a planned way. And again, I, this is in, uh, compliance with our comprehensive plan, which is supposed to be a roadmap, uh, for slow planned growth, as long as it's in compliance with our comprehensive plan that, uh, took a lot of time and effort from a lot of people to develop. I think that, you know, we can't, we can't go back and forth, we're either in favor of growth or we're not. And if it's in compliance with our, if it's in compliance with our comprehensive plan, then, you know, I think we ought to approve it, that's just the way I feel.
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with you, Paul, but I do think that, uh, there's some things that could be done, or have not been done on this project, to make it more palatable to the community.
Well, and I agree with that, and one of them is landscape, which I think, I think I, I would hope that, uh, we can make this development, uh, approve this development, uh, contingent upon the buffering being put in place, that's actually looks like it is in place in this plan.
Well, you've got some landscaping, but you don't know the size of the plants and that type stuff. So you really don't, not have any.
They do.
How big are they, Joseph? How big is the plant, Joseph, the buffer, front?
You're talking about, uh?
Landscape, landscape.
Berkeley?
Particle.
Um, they're required to be thirty inches. And, and the, the shrubs are thirty inches, of course, you got some upper story trees that are fifty feet apart. Of course, that's how tall their code requires them to be, and then, you know, if they grow, however each ends up trimming them is, is how they'll be.
And then, and then also the parking, that's at least showing up on this site plan, it's actually facing the building. So as, uh, cars pull into the store, they will not be facing Mr. Bontrager's house, they'll actually be facing the store, which would eliminate that concern. Yeah, they will. Sure they will.
Just one second. Hang on a minute, go ahead, sir, come back up. Come up and to the microphone. My question is about, uh, tax department, I understood that there was supposed to be some tax department, if this, no, nothing like that came into effect. You speak of development. Okay, I don't know what the property appraisers, how they handle this stuff, but if property values go down around these convenience stores, it's, whatever you want to call them, liquor stores, how, how is that improving development in a residential area?
What makes you say that they will?
That's, that's what I just said, I said, I don't know what the property appraiser's take on it is.
It's a good question, I don't, I don't think it has any adverse impact on the overall.
Okay, as far as y'all talking about shining lights, and also, I'd like to address another statement that was made. There has not been a dolomite mine where they're talking about putting store at. That's right on the corner, and I've lived there almost, well, I've lived in the area almost seventy years. The dolomite mine's back to the west of that and the north of that. Yes. And, uh, actually, I, I worked at a couple of those dolomite mines, so I am pretty familiar with that, so. You either gonna shine lights on Mr. Bontrager's house, or Mr. Young's house. He's on, Mr. Bontrager's on the east, Mr. Young is on the south. You're right, and Mr. Duncan's on the south, so anyway, I just had a question about the tax, and thank you. Alright, thank you.
Okay, the mine was in that lot, I sold the pond area for a mitigation purpose. To Florida, they're gonna do wetland, uh, likely some mitigation. And the traffic was entering from this, that property what I have, right now, we have a drive. So the trucks were entering from that location and getting out from the, and entering on a seventy-one for sure, that is what I know. I can add, if the commissioner wants, anything, about thirty-six inch, another privacy wall like that, to avoid that lice impacting somewhere, or whatever, for safety. My engineer, if he'll approve that or whatever. So, I don't have a problem about adding thirty-six inch of privacy fence, another buffer.
Well, I know that, uh, out at the Dollar General in Dalewood, the company actually installed a fence across sixty miles. And the one out here, they put a privacy fence along the boundary, right, Joseph?
Yeah, ten feet tall.
Yeah.
That is on a backside, it's not covering the front edge, if I cover all front edge and make like a jail or prison, it will be unsafe for my business. I will not do that, I will not. I will not make hive wall and hide my building, my cashier along working there, sir. I will not do that. I'm sorry. I can't help any good type considering lights, wind padding or whatever. I agree with that.
Now, Joseph, you've done the lighting survey, right?
We have not submitted a lighting plan. We'd be glad to do it. Code requires that you can't have spill over. So he's, you know, he's held by code that if he's got lights shining on the road, then I guess code enforcement would, would handle that. But all your lighting, I don't want to speak for him, but it's all downward facing, no spill over onto other pieces of property.
Yeah, the lighting I was saying was about the vehicle of light.
If some. They're concerned that like the.
Building lights should not shine in Mr. Bond Trigger.
I'm working on the.
What are your hours?
Less than, I'm gonna close at before 8:30 or maybe 8:00. My, all the stores, I close at 8:00. So no worries about 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, nighttime disturbance like that. I don't see that. Generally, all my stores close at 8:00.
8:00?
Yes, sir. 8:00, 8:30. It takes 8:30 minutes for cashier closing like that. Yeah.
Any more questions from the commission?
No, but I have a comment. I would like to all, problems that you're playing for everything you have down for Jackson County and what you're trying to do. But I think there should be more due diligence for us, you know, with the neighbors and community. And at this particular time, I cannot wholeheartedly support it as it stands now. This is my thing.
So real quick, as far as the process, there's, there's a pre-development meeting that's optional. And you, you did the pre-development meeting on, on your own, am I right?
Yeah, I'm a people.
And then with the county?
County, yes. I'm a county. I check with them that can I build a store here? I was told yes. But I was asked to submit application with engineering and surveying and everything done. So I followed that requirement. I have my local surveyor, local engineer, and I believe I'm meeting the county requirement.
That's, you know, I just want to make the point that he, he's gone through the process of what's required. There's public notices that were, that were put out. And in addition to that, you know, the landscaping is optional and he still opted to do the landscaping around the building. So it's not like he tried to ramrod, you know, this through or anything like that. He's followed the process.
Right, I understand that, but if everyone is opposed to this project right now, stop paying taxes or leave the community, where would that leave the county? Where would that leave the county for its revenue?
They stop paying taxes?
They stop paying, sell the property or what have you and vacate.
There's a big what if, that's a big what if.
There's also a list there on this one that supports it. You've got residents on the lights road and some more there too. Nobody really wants something that in front of their house. Nobody does. I've got a thing in front of my house. I did not want it. I've got trucks coming in all, all the time, lights, but, you know, nobody wants it. But if you do that every place, you will have nothing.
I'm on a major intersection right over there. If I have a house on major intersection, how can I expect privacy and those things if I'm on a major intersection? Do state rules?
Well, one of the things I bring up in roundtables is the possibility of changing the regulations to add a step to the process. So that the future developers don't have to spend $25,000, $30,000 on plans before we know whether or not the community will support it or not support it. But that'll come up in roundtable. But, all right, anything else? Mr. Hill? Okay. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Donna Froh. We got a second by Commissioner Bay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have two for. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Two, three. I think there are some things that can be done. And I think you need to go back to the drawing board. Yes, Mr. Chilpan?
I see a liquor store on Camden Street. We're not asking schools to build a school next to the liquor store. All the keys going right across the liquor store from the new school buildings. There's no restriction for them to build schools close to the schools. I don't agree with that. It takes forever.
The liquor store, I think, was there ahead of the school.
Correct. And we build a new school right across the liquor store. Brand new building. All keeps going, studying, watching the sign, everything. I have seen if I'm on right on an intersection, if I'm worried about my ski, I will not have a house on intersection because of the safety. I'm not here to guide anyone, tell anyone, do nothing. But this is my feelings. I will express. I don't appreciate this because I spent a lot of money buying this property. I sold these, invested money in the county. I decided to go in this county. I had other opportunities. I refused. And I thought I should go here. I'm the person volunteer and says if any issue with the vote rent program, my land is there. I'll give a county land there to build a vote rent. But anyway, that's your own decisions. I appreciate your decisions. Appreciate them coming, people favoring, opposing, everyone. But the county needs to look at that. Why this? Can we avoid this? I, 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 I'm serious about those things.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. We'll go. Y'all want to take it first? All right, let's take a five-minute break for the people who were here for that. If you want to stay, we'd love to have you. If you want to leave, that's fine too. We'll be back in 20 after.
What are these fees based on? Is it based on maybe estimated hours that will be expended or is it comparable programs?
Yes, I looked at, there aren't really any comparable programs, you know, we're unique. But I did look at summer camp fees around various areas and also took into consideration the salary cost that it would burn for our staff to provide those services.
Any more questions?
I'll put a motion that the request be approved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Donna Froh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Tammy. Okay, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
I'm not out of. We took Tammy in. That's difficult.
Good morning, gentlemen. This is a request to keep the money that was made from the sale of the Cessna airplane last year, which was $81,161 out of the excess budget funds we're turning in from last year's budget. The total amount was $85,909.37. And we were requesting to keep the $81,161 to invest in a drone program. That was the money that was.
I got a motion. And I've got a second. Motion by McKinney, second by, which one you said? Hill. Didn't we approve this drone program?
Oh, you did, but what happened, what had happened was the state was limiting what kind of drones we could purchase. And the list didn't come out until early this year. Because most drones are made overseas and they were in fear, some were made in countries, they were putting spyware in the, in the drones. So for public service agencies. Now, a citizen can buy one from anywhere.
Right.
Those buying it with government funds, they, they limit, Department of Management Services are, are limiting which ones you can buy. And the list didn't come out until a few months back.
But we approved you instituting a drone program. You're gonna sell the airplane and use the funds to establish the drone program.
That's correct. And we were not able.
What you're asking now is just to.
We are at, yeah, we're at the point now of turning in last year's excess funds.
By law, he's required to tell you how much excess deed he had left and you have to decide, do you allow him to keep them for the purpose he wants or turn them back in?
Well, you got $83,000, didn't you, Sheriff?
$81.
$81,161.
He ran out of time. He didn't get it done by 9:30, 10:01. This money is due to you. You have to take action to allow him to keep it.
What specifically we use this month for? Is it purchase like a dozen drones or one drone?
To purchase drones and a clear system, it, it won't purchase a dozen, a good drone for public safety and a clear, spend $30,000 easily. And that was the whole goal behind selling the plane last year. We went through the process here was to, we didn't have an airplane pilot. But I have already four guys that's licensed to fly drones that have, went and got certified. So, and it's just moving into the future. You can have a drone in the air in a matter of seconds. And.
Are you looking at two drones there or?
We haven't. I, I haven't bought one because I don't have the money yet. That's why I'm here. So.
So if you order one, how long before you think you can get?
I can't tell you that.
We got some John Deere gators we've been looking for.
I've, I've got some, I've got some radios that we ordered last September, some mobile and handhelds that are not in yet. So I can't tell you when they'll be here.
Optimally, how many would you like?
Every, how many I can get. What I'm asking, what I'm, what I'm asking for is the $81,161 that was come from the sale of the airplane. That's what I'm asking.
I don't play, we're against that, but I would think he probably would have a little plan on what to do with that one. I mean, besides just a drone program, like he was asking, how many?
Guys, it's a yes or no. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you what my desire is. My desire is to invest in a drone program.
But we don't have a plan for that?
We just, a couple of months ago, they told us what kind we could borrow. Have you, have you dealt with anything? Didn't you just say you had something? I mean, you don't, you don't call a manufacturer and then fill the net. I mean, you don't, you don't call a manufacturer and then film the next day and do a demo for you.
So, what you, we could amend the motions, maybe we can expand up to eighty, whatever it was.
I'm fine with the money. I just would thought, you know, like.
Purchase as many as possible.
At some point, we'd like to report as to what that drone program actually is gonna consist of. There's one, two of them, or, you know.
We're on a waiting list now for a demo, and we have been for a couple of months.
Okay, any more questions? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. You can keep the money.
Thank you, sir.
Just tell us what you're gonna do with it.
I promise you, it'll be legal.
All right. I need to see you before you leave here, Donna. Daniel Warren.
Good morning. First item is for board approval and signature for State Grant twenty-two oh four eleven for NMO System Maintenance and Engineering Maintenance at the Sheriff's Office.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donna Froh. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
The second item is the actual contract, we converged one for that NMO System Maintenance.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second, second by Commissioner Fay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Where are you going to set this up? Which office?
This is for, this is for the Sheriff's Office and the backup site.
The current, or the new one?
It's not new equipment, it's just maintenance on the.
New office.
The new office.
Yeah.
That's to be determined, sir.
Well, we got the office, he's in the office out at Dover, and we got the one on ninety.
This is maintenance for, the servers are actually, they're located at the Sheriff's Office, our current Sheriff's Office.
I was just gonna pay to move. All right. Thank you. Mary Ballant, Ballant.
My name is Mary Ballant. I am the administrator of the Canhandle Library Cooperative, and I'm here today to request the commission to approve a new interlocal agreement between Holmes County, Calvin County, and Jackson County for library services.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Froh. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Chief Bruner.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is a request for board approval of a contract between Jackson County and Jackson Hospital for pre-employment and annual firefighter physicals. This is a renewal with no change in price.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney. Now, didn't we recently approve some sort of an agreement with someone from South Florida?
That's correct.
Come up and do the annual physicals?
That's correct.
So, how are you going to do this?
This is gonna be a, for all of our pre-employment and a backup to this company. We're gonna try for the first year to see how this goes.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Jeffrey Redister.
This is a request board approval of contract amendment for D two chip seal.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second for discussion.
Second by Commissioner Donna Froh. Go ahead.
This is the one for the CEI, right?
Yes.
And it was because they were working on multiple jobs.
On multiple jobs at one time.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And the next thing on here is. Is a request board approval to reduce, reduce speed limit on NorTech Boulevard on Bay Park.
A motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions?
What, what warrants this drop in ten miles an hour?
Well, we've had citizen complaints, and they're, they're complaining about the speed being too high on the Bay Park. You know, I've explained it as thirty-five miles an hour on a dirt road, on a maintained dirt road, and typically forty-five, but it's, some citizens have steadily raised the complaint, so I'm bringing it to you to see if.
I just wanted to clear that up. We have complaints about speed all over our county, and a speed limit sign is not gonna slow them down. Sheriff Dan Phil can slow them down, but I know he don't have enough to.
Right.
Have somebody on every road, but that's the only way it's gonna slow it down.
I was just gonna say, you just wanna make sure that you inform those persons that are making this request that we can change the speed limits all day long, but we don't have much impact on what's actually happening.
If we do this, we gonna change speed limit on every road.
Is Wendy?
I'm speaking as a citizen, if you don't mind.
Well, I hope you're a citizen.
At the moment, so Florida statute three sixteen, one eighty-three says, on all streets or highways, maximum speeds for vehicles must be thirty miles per hour in business or residential districts. So, it's a bit high on NorTech. We find people flying down NorTech Road, which I live in that area, and I do understand they're gonna speed regardless, but if you drop it, that will make them aware and help them reduce it a little bit. But throughout the subdivision, the speed limits are too high according to Florida statute.
Can you repeat the speed limit, and, and repeat that last part of the speed limit and what it's supposed to be in?
On all streets or highways, the maximum speed limits for all vehicles must be thirty miles per hour in business or residence districts. That's section one eighty-three of chapter three sixty.
Resident district. What does that mean?
District, subdivisions, residential areas.
Does that apply to everything that's in them? I don't know whether we have the same sort of zoning, but I guess our county is broken into residential districts, or we don't have that type of zoning duty. Like, City of Marion has got R one, R two, R three districts. We don't have that here in the county.
I guess not, but DOT also sets the standard for thirty miles per hour in residential area.
I'm not real, what would, I was just gonna say, what would define an area as being residential?
Well, where it's either land use is residential, a subdivision is residential.
So, the road in front of my house is resident, well, no, it's probably hang, but it's supposed to be thirty miles long?
When Florida statute.
I think there's more to that. There's more to that, no, it's gotta be.
Well, I could read the entire statute to you.
Are you referencing Thomas Lake and Hills as a subdivision?
Yes.
I'm just curious, I mean.
They're a subdivision.
Yes, subdivision. No, I know, that's, I think that, I talked to Charles about it, and that's what he indicated to me, so I was thinking that's.
So, NorTech, but this is a through road, right?
It's a through road, east and west.
Through road.
Through, through.
Traveled by a lot of people, not subdivision people, but this.
It's a through road, yeah, but it's. And then, now, we're specifically talking about east of Fairview, right?
Correct.
Not, 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 not west, so it's.
Not going through.
Not, not going through, because most of that.
So, it's not.
It's only the highway part on the east side.
It is a boulevard that is off of Highway seventy, I'm sorry, Highway one sixty-seven, which is.
But you're talking about both sides of, of Fairview.
But what's the difference on the other side?
I don't know, the request was only for the east side, that's all we're doing.
Is there a safety issue with people negotiating the road?
Just the speed, the speed travel.
I can tell you my own experiences. I mean, I pulled out on NorTech to turn right, and from the east comes Hasty Pond, and I saw no one there, and then as I turned, in my rearview, I see somebody flying up. We have people flying all the time on that road, and I know people are gonna speed, but we have people walking, riding bikes, you know, it's, we've had probably a half a dozen new homes go up in that area, and so it's a subdivision, it's a boulevard, so.
But the request is, as Commissioner Hill said, is specifically for NorTech in between Fairview and Vancouver, just a pay portion.
Okay.
Towards that way.
We're pivot hill. Yeah, the east, east of.
Yes. Okay, any more questions?
Thank you.
So, let me ask this, the request is to go to thirty-five, what Wendy just said is basically to make it thirty.
Michelle's looking up the statute.
Oh, okay. I think Mr. Charles asked me to say thirty-five, right, then, I just wanna make sure, okay, I didn't want to call the court in the house, you know, say.
All right. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four one.
Now, I want my speed to drop thirty-five from my house, 'cause they run over me.
Hunter.
Good morning. The first item I have is asking for your approval of the contract assignment for Cessna Consulting to Schumacher Advisors.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinney. I would just like to say that we need to be thinking about what we're going to ask him to work on for next year. It is not too early. Go ahead and get a list, put together of items that he should be concentrating on. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
The next item is asking for your approval of a supplemental work authorization for the Chris Road Design Project.
This is for archaeological services?
Yes, it's something they asked for additional outside of the, it's a work that they quoted us when they did the initial design, and it's for a cultural resources survey, so it takes some soil samples along the road at different, different sites.
David, is this a company you've worked with before? Is this, is this a company you've worked with before? This is actually under your contract, correct? This.
No, we moved on to that, Paleo West.
Is this for the references, because of Dozer's history?
Yeah.
Or are we talking about archaeology, like Indians, or?
So, there's a letter that they got from the Department of Environmental Protection, and their reasoning was that there hasn't been a study ever done on the road before, so, to their knowledge, that's what they wanted for it.
So, do all our roads have studied down on the history?
No, but this one, all they want, fourteen shovel test bits. I think they go out and they dig a hole, like thirty by twenty-four, that's it.
I understand the process, I just wonder why this was particular. I mean, we got eight hundred, nine hundred miles of dirt road, why this one?
It's easy to understand.
Well, that's why I just asked if it's, if it's Dozer's.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Yeah, it says favorable, favorable environmental conditions for archaeological resources to be present. This is their, their phrasing for that.
Who's requiring?
BP.
BP.
Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Froh. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And we received the proposals for the housing RP, so we want to ask to set a special meeting on the next, or meeting day before the actual regular meeting, on May twenty-fourth, at four P M.
The motion by Commissioner Fay. Second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Question before we move on, but we, we only received two proposals, correct?
Yes, sir.
And one of them really was somewhat non-responsive. They responded, but basically said they didn't have enough time to put together information, so really, we're only looking at one proposal. Is that what the issue is?
So, they can provide additional information if they need to at that meeting. They give you like a fuller picture of it. They can't change what they submitted, but.
So, this is to actually ask both those companies to make a formal presentation?
Right, we're gonna, I think we've done the path, maybe ten, fifteen minutes to give a presentation of what they want to do.
How many minutes?
Presentation, but not to, not to add to something, because you just throw it in and say, well, I get there and I'll.
And they're gonna say what they're gonna be able to do.
Are they, are there all these promises made by these groups, gonna be backed up by shorty bonds? I, I mean, again, we've got numerous companies that have blown smoke, and, and, and so, are these gonna be, we're not wasting our time to find out these companies come along the trail of the future, and all of a sudden, they come out, they can't do what they promised.
It's totally up to us on the backside.
But that was, that included the bids.
Yeah.
Are they aware that there are gonna be consequences if they go in there, and they can't financially meet their obligation to perform the duties or the task they have? Because again, we can drag this out for a year, and they find out that the financial market is shifting, which is majorly shifting now, I mean, I, I mean, I, but.
I don't think we got that far in the actual bid documents themselves to say that much, but I mean, surely.
It's a good time to ask, but I think it's.
We can negotiate that, but we, you get that far.
If I remember correctly, on your motion.
So, we don't need to do anything as far as.
You don't have to yet, you can wait till you get the.
We got it. All right.
I think we're good?
Yeah, we're good. They said we did.
Who was the motion?
The motion was paid, second by McKinney, vote five zero, to set a public hearing, is all, I mean, a special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting.
Ballant.
This is for discussion of appointment to Tri-County Airport Authority. So, first of all, we're asking for the board appointment of Norman McLeod, and also to recommend an additional name to fill the remaining seat. This is a request that came from them.
Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second on the.
Second by Commissioner Fay on Norman McLeod, but we still have to come up with another one.
We just got this when they got our thing. Usually, they let me know, or McKinney, to know where we can come up with a name.
We want to get table, a second part of it, table the second part of that motion, we include, y'all give y'all time to figure out adequate person. My motion would include that we set a recommended name, but on the second one, let them Commissioners have a tune to find out. Who wants to be on the board?
All right, who gets the second? Okay, you agree?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. I got that.
I don't think anybody else from the area would want somebody on the, I mean, it's, it's in the edge of Holmes County, so it'd be Commissioner Kenny, myself.
You'll bring us back.
We got.
What, what was the reason for Tiffany and?
I don't know, I mean, we appoint them and they leave.
All right, move to the change portion of the agenda. Ms. Michelle. No, yeah.
Everybody done that? Jeffrey, number sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen, you're right.
This is a request for board approval of change order number two, chip seal. We have thirty days.
Where's that location at, Jeffrey?
That's mine.
That's gonna be yours, but we're, we're looking to add thirty days to it, but as my understanding, they're supposed to start on pavement notice today.
Which one of these?
That's gonna be shallow.
They said Monday or Tuesday is what Royce told me earlier.
They had told me the tenth, so I'm, but it's still, it's running out of time, so we're looking to get.
Well, they've had time.
Right.
But we gotta have it done.
Right.
I called NASTA today. Yeah, but they gonna drag it out. I make a motion to accept the change order. There's no more money, right?
Okay.
No, it is not, that's number one. That is number one.
Second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. That was item sixteen. Second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. That was item sixteen on the change sheet. Item seventeen, Brett Daniels.
Good morning. So first up for you, I have a request for approval of change order two for any spring space to a sewer. This will deal with the paving portion of it. We had some issues getting a geo-technical survey. So we met with engineers and road bridge to come up with a, a base layer that we're gonna be confronted with, and we also changed the asphalt mix for the under, the current construction base.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second, second by Commissioner Page. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Okay.
Get those roads fixed.
Yes, sir. So second, I have a request for board approval to set public hearing for May twenty-fourth, six fifteen to review an amendment to section seventy dash one point one of Jackson County Code of Ordinance, this is chapter seventy. This is related to Spring Creek and the litter associated with the traffic that we get out there. Shall we read that now or just?
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
All right, and lastly, I'm asking the board to authorize emergency well repair for Jackson County Water System Plant One, Well Three. This well had started having some issues earlier this year. We were able to get a contractor in to come out, pull the casing. We had significant iron deposits that were limiting the amount of water that it could pull out of the aquifer. So what they're gonna do is do a air injection, which will go in and blast all the iron, go ahead and break that loose, suction that out. That'll be the five thousand dollars on top of the quote you have. I have found that out after the fact.
What's the quote?
Forty-three, eight forty-five, but add five to that for the air injection, that'll be forty-eight, eight forty-five.
Which one was this?
This, this, we call it Plant One, Well Three, so it's the Marion Water Plant over by the Signature Healthcare Facility.
Forty-eight, eight forty-five.
Yes, sir. And that, and that comes with some warranted items. They had to rebuild the impeller, which is below the surface, obviously.
Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Pro.
Where's the funding coming out of this?
So I put it here for American Rescue. I did have a, a previous American Rescue request for this work. It just actually come apart quicker than we expected, so.
That's part of your motion, use those dollars.
We don't have any off, I mean, we don't have, we do it.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And I didn't mention, but anticipated work is in three weeks, so we should have it back online by the end of the month.
Hunter Fox. Ms. Will Ann, would you make sure that they put page numbers on these changes when you got several like this? Go ahead, Hunter.
Yes, just asking for you to approve the provisional word amount for the RP for the line services for the Marion Lavery.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Paul, you have a question?
For me, it's twenty-five, God help her.
Okay.
Where's them funds gonna come from?
They come from the clicks funds.
I figured, but I just.
All right, so. What we doing? Well, yeah, I got this and I got community development.
That should be the last item for the regular, I believe.
All right, community development.
The request to set a public hearing on May the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two at six fifteen P M for revision to development agreement for sellers crossing subdivision.
Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Pro. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Wendy?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. This is a request for board approval of a modification to the subordination policy for the housing grants mortgages, which we're also asking permission to change names of staff as needed.
Explain that to me?
Um.
So we have a subordination policy in place. We're adding some text. One, to say if no subordination has previously been approved, meaning they get one subordination of mortgage, which being, we will take a step back and allow it to get refinanced in a first mortgage company to take that first place. And also, you have to change the names of staff on the policy.
What, I see, is Emerald Coast gone? Is that what's going on?
No, sir. We've just had some change of staff. We have a new housing grant coordinator.
What about Appalachian Regional Planning Council? Where are they in them?
So this subordination policy, when it was originally written, we only had Emerald Coast in place. So now, instead of Emerald Coast doing the subordination policy, it should come to the housing grant coordinator of the county. And the planning council should not have to fool with this subordination policy. That should be.
Who's our grant coordinator?
Miss Shelley Owen.
Any more questions? Got a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Donna Pro. Ready, Paul?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Now, Hunter, what have we got here? I got discussion of endeavor phase three bid response.
That's on the other.
That's on the other special, that's the special, we gotta close this one first to get it out.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's not even this package. Oh, sorry.
We can do roundtable now or do it after. Let's go ahead and, yeah, let's go ahead and. Uh, we gonna do roundtable now, then we'll do the special meeting probably after lunch. Okay. Don't grin.
I'm not grinning.
These boys get hungry. All right, Sheriff, you got anything? Michelle?
No.
Will Ann?
Well, Josh Norman is here, so I didn't know if y'all wanted to hear from him now or at the special meeting.
He's here, here? I don't see him.
He won't even want to go even.
I've seen his face.
Yeah.
I, I haven't seen him, but anyway.
Hunter can go retrieve him if you want to speak to him now.
You want to do it in the special meeting? We'll talk to him in the special meeting.
Okay.
Anything else?
And then Mr. Leon Kelly is here, and this is, I really should have put this on the agenda, but Mr. Kelly, what is exactly you're requesting to use the courthouse on Memorial Day?
Come, come up, please, just state your name.
He did email, I just lost sight of it, and so he's here and wanted to give him the chance to ask permission.
Good morning.
Morning.
I would like to apologize to the board for not getting it here all the time. Normally, we have the Memorial Day services at the courthouse. In the past, we've been doing it at Madison Park, but we want to go back now to the courthouse and we requested permission that we do that. D A B D F W in America.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Page. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Got it, Liam.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's all? Mr. Donna Pro?
Yeah, just a clarification on earlier action with Shield Power and Delaw. We, we denied the motion, free to vote. You said go back to the drawing board specifically, or you asking to go back with a different site or just redevelop the site plan or?
I think what he needs, what, both. I think he needs to go back, he needs to talk to the neighbors and see if he can get a consensus. If not, make sure that he's developed a site plan where the lights aren't going to be flashing in these people's houses because he says eight, nine o'clock at night, he's closing, but you'll have people go into that liquor store when he's closed, they'll still show up. I, I would just like to see a different approach.
I, I think you'll have more than likely a difficult time of getting consensus from the neighbors at this point in time, so I guess.
But I think there's some things that can be done, and that's, I wanted to explore that before I can support it.
Yeah, I think one of the things too that you mentioned that I thought too, I think this board has to look deep about allowing, I don't care if they, I've said this before, I don't care if you bring me color crayons to expect some, I understand their acquisition of property and then hoping you can build something on it maybe later. You don't know what it is. That's land you've changed. But I, I understand with meeting with Mr. Japan that he's got thirty-seven thousand dollars in this site. Now, no one forced him to do that, but I, I'll be dare say I've done development for twenty-two years and probably is larger than he is, and I'm not required to do that. And that's Panama City Beach and their street, and that's Mexico Beach and their stricter than Panama City Beach. And so I, I just hope that we can look at something, I think.
I'm gonna bring it up.
I know, and we will in just a second, but I, I think we need to have a comprehensive plan that just says, before you get a yea or nay, you don't need to have these complex things. I, I, my intent is to build X this size, and here's the guidelines, I must always, it said approve, but chasing a rabbit down an expensive hole like that, you're to turn massively, people investing in the town.
Right.
I mean, to say that you don't have, I mean, I don't know if anybody in here that would throw away thirty-seven thousand dollars on a wheel, I wouldn't, I don't care.
Because at the end of the day, you want, uh, community to support you, whatever venue you put there.
I agree with that. The other, the other side of that is, is if you're in compliance with the general provisions of comprehensive plan, you've kind of got an idea that, you know, what I want to do there, if it's, if it's in compliance with that.
Yeah, and I agree with, with the section, that, that's still Ag Two.
Adibility.
Property rights.
What you brought up, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I agree, but, but again, that, that's the only loophole that I see that the board ever has to control said business. If it was commercial building, a thousand percent my hand would be up, but it's Ag Two. And, and we, we chose not to change it, or at least the vote was not to change it, I mean, not to permit the building because it is Ag Two. And there's gotta be some buffer between commercial and, I mean, to me. Now, again, if it was, if it was already zoned, then maybe we need to look at maybe a, a larger picture and say, where do we want to develop now? Because if Mr. Japan is right, it is a large heavily, I mean, I, I remember as a small child traveling that road and with my family, and it's always been, you know, heavily traveled, it's state road, it's state road, and, and so, uh, so.
Well, well, not only that, but I mean, I've traveled that road quite a bit. Anytime I'm gonna pick up the road, I pass ten, twelve, fourteen dump trucks.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's a heavily trafficked.
So maybe we should look at, well, that should have been zoned different, you know, yeah, so that, that's my only, that was my only luck.
I don't think it's gonna increase traffic there. It's gonna be the same traffic that's going all the time. You're not gonna drive from Marianna to that liquor store.
I doubt, I doubt very seriously that Dalewood has increased traffic volume on State Road sixty-nine or Sweet Pond, right, because it's doing the junior school there, it's.
Oh, yeah.
It is a state road, they think the traffic will.
Yeah, but I understand, but, uh, and, and keeping what you just said, and I know it's not my turn, but we need to probably task administration to developing that additional step in there. Come on up, Ms. Wendy, that would say, present us what you're going to do, and you can give us a drawing that is a reasonable depiction, not something you gotta draw, or David's gotta draw, or.
Could be a preliminary, preliminary site.
Yeah, draw it out. And, and it basically is a travel, and then we tell the neighbors, you know, okay, he's wanting to put in this. Will it hit?
Well, again, I, I think we're in a, we're always.
They spend.
Rural County is always gonna be in a transitional state. I mean, luckily for me, the beaches are defined immensely, and all I do is buy these property. I don't care, I mean, I always know what I can build on. I know how high I can build, I know two hundred and thirty feet Bay County, out in Panama City Beach, and I can go forty-eight foot Mexico Beach, that's the height when the commercial. So I know that. There's no changing that because the land is already adopted for that use, for that change. It's, it, the weeds is when you start going outside, the fringes are where property still residential, only if you try to commercial, and that's, that's always, that's always negotiation.
Well, that's why I want to make sure he gets a copy of the comprehensive land development plan. He needs to know this before he's going out here investing in a piece of property. You may get it approved and you may not.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't gamble on that again, I wouldn't.
Huh?
I wouldn't gamble on that. Tell me thirty-seven thousand dollars, yes, from over five people, I wouldn't pay that account. I guess someone else gave me more, sure, but that's what I'm saying, I mean, that's.
But anyway, go ahead, Ms. Will.
I just wanted to let you know, to ponder that next year, we, we are up to renew the comprehensive plan. So we probably need to get a consultant for that. We're gonna ask for that in the budget to help us, but to consider what you'd like to see in it, because it's time to renew.
Was it every five years, Ms. Wendy, that file?
All right.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Paul?
Yes, yeah. I just have one quick thing, and, and I know this as policy, the last twenty, seventy-five hundred dollars that we give the volunteers is required to have a match. I'd like to ask for one exclusion only because Grand Ridge, were they able to get a federal grant to pay for their new truck, do they guys, bless them for that, it's a three hundred something pound truck. They have one that is in very, very good shape, and Dalewood has offered that truck for a certain amount. They sold another truck and they got a little bit, they need just, just the seventy-five hundred to acquire this truck, or they wouldn't be doing a match.
And they're not going to do the match if we give them the approval?
No, they won't be able to. They need this money to add what they sold to purchase the truck.
Okay.
And again, this is a one-time thing, it's just because they have opportunity to acquire it.
You saying Dalewood or Grand Ridge? Because Grand Ridge doesn't got any of them.
No, no, no. Dalewood is buying Grand Ridge's truck.
Is that a motion? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill to grant a waiver. Commissioner Page has seconded. All those in favor, raise your right. Motion carries five zero.
It's just one time.
One time?
Yeah, just to require.
All right, very good. That's for good use. Okay, Commissioner Page? Commissioner McKinnon?
Yes, one thing, we're moving register. Since the districts have changed, now can we get an updated list of the mowing contracts for, you know, the number of roads gonna be, need to be maintained? For the control and, and mowing contract?
We don't have a mowing contract.
Well, you know, for.
That is a good point, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, I had a list, but it was outdated now, you know.
For the roads that are mowed.
Right.
Fire in house.
It's the same.
All pay roads on by the county, but you can run a list of them.
Yeah.
I said I had nothing, but he brought up a good point. What are we doing with the new district as far as, uh, how we work, you know? Who's covering it? What supervisors and all that?
Right now, uh.
Or what's playing?
We're trying to get all the ladies in office trying to learn the new areas as they're getting the calls in, so right now, all the supervisors should be covering their new areas. And then my graders are still in the same areas right now, and I've got to sit down and, and figure out who's got all the miles and all on the graders and, and kind of rezone them if there's anything to be done. But right now, the supervisors like, like right now for you, Cruz, he should be up through graceful, up to the state line. Mr. McKinney, he's taking over, over two, uh, two egg and, and basket and all that. And, uh, Mr. Peacock's caught that little bit of, uh, highway nanny. I think Robert picked up just a little bit, and, uh, Mr. Donna Pro, you still got Cruz and.
So my Mary Anne, in the area, they have that, so we get calls.
Right.
Well, I mean, they, they has been questioned, so that was.
We're, we're trying to get it and all, and in the middle of trying to go to Iowa, because Iowa should have it all identified in there. But like right now, Pam's taking calls in, she's having to try to track it down, and so right now, if it goes to the wrong one, they're, they're not hesitant about letting somebody know that they're here.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I, I worked, I think you asked last month, where were we at on that?
On that, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, the computer stuff, we got.
That's Joey, Joey.
Joey heard it.
Yeah, absolutely.
You tell, you tell me it's going online tomorrow.
Close, so our launch date, just to keep their, their documentation in track, is gonna be the first of June. So we've got everything worked out. They're working into the system currently, just kind of putting a concurrent request to test it out, working out a few bugs, but June versus our launch date.
June first.
Yes, okay.
And just real briefly, so a citizen will go onto our website and go to, I guess, a drop-down box to road, and then they'll fill out like basic information, maybe they upload a picture, because I have a lot of people, I'm sure all the commissioners do. They'll say my road is destroyed, and they'll take a picture of it. Will they be able to send that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so they're.
Yeah, you can, you can upload, uh, additional information, videos, pictures, whatever, whatever.
You can, you can upload additional information, videos, pictures, whatever, whatever.
Then how would it chronicleize it for us? So then someone would acknowledge that because that's obviously.
That goes to our office staff, but then routed to a district supervisor who then performs the work and updates the notes. And all, all of those tracks along the way are, are kept up with for the citizens, so they can.
If I want to input something, does it segregate that from what the citizens are inputting?
It would work the same.
Everybody sees what I put in.
Well, I mean, we, we could have certain parts of it that we don't put out, but just, but for updates on, oh, we need this piece of equipment before we can make the repair or anything like that, those would be open to the public or available for them to see, so they can keep up with the status changes.
We can probably make them like an employee view or something.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You need to search it from the back end.
Yeah, that's something I can put in.
Yeah, everybody will have it.
You know, this one needs work.
Right. You, we can, we can segment it out. We'll make you a user account where you see all the requests for District Five and for all the other projects as well.
But, but you, now, I'm willing to just, you, you do realize that's public record, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
I want to see all Mr. Peacock's request. They're going to get a printed out request.
Right. Yeah. I'm not going to put anything on there that I don't want to be seen, but I would like to have the opportunity to input things. Because I, I put a lot, I see a lot of things to deal with.
You all have backend logins where you can keep up with it.
Oh, you have. Play?
The only thing I'd like to do, just publicly thank Marie. We've been up to date on our four minutes. I don't know if y'all realize that.
I have. You're doing a good job, Marie. Is that it?
That's it.
Danielle?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I do have a couple of things. That's why I said we'll, we'll break for lunch. I'm sure all of you've heard about the award of money that allegedly Bay County is getting from FEMA. What we're, I'm working on is putting together the, a trip possibly to go to Washington, D.C. and meet with our legislative delegation and possibly with someone from FEMA in order to hopefully plead our case to see what we can do. But I've got more work to do to gather information before I start making phone calls, trying to get everything scheduled. Walk in, you got to have your act together, and I want to make sure we can do that. Just give it a shot. I mean, if we can't do it, we can't do it, but if we can, that's great. So it may pop up where we got to go immediately. So you hear I've gone to Washington, D.C. and took someone with me. That's what it's about, and it'll be a fast trip.
What approach are you taking differently, just to kick some eagles?
Pardon?
What, what, what approach are you taking differently than we've already tried possibly?
Well, I want to apply logic, and I don't want to give out a lot of information.
I understand.
Because other people do.
How was Bay County successful would be a better question.
I want to review theirs and determine that, and before I go, I will know that answer. Because I want, I know what we were told. I know what they've done in Bay County, and it's a hundred and eighty degrees out. So we'll, we'll wait and see. We talked about the possibility of changing the requirement, and Wendy wants to wait till next year on the. I don't want to wait that long on drawing, changing, adding the step in there where people can.
I actually think we can do it a part of our ordinance update because that's where the process is outlined in our ordinance.
When is that going to take place?
Like now. It's happening now. Y'all will be scheduling meetings with you all to do that soon.
Make sure that's on.
And so that can just be inserted, just like we have a preliminary site plan meeting, a pre-app meeting. It can be an option that if they want to go through, you'd have to still do a public hearing if you want the public to be able to voice. But it could be in a preliminary process instead of an official one.
I think, I think that we definitely need to take a look at that. Timmy Perry. Come up here, Tim. It's your time.
It's time to shine.
Timmy? There's some limbs that have been trimmed. I have problems in my district where limbs have been trimmed, and they have left the limbs laying. I have problems where they have thrown limbs into pastures. And we need to get this problem rectified. What are you doing?
We've been in contact with them, and they are going to remove the limbs. They're all coming back.
Are y'all having this problem?
I ain't got no limbs.
The power company is the one I'm talking about.
Oh, the power.
The power company. Well.
Yeah, sometimes they could leave.
Now, contractors, those contractors, and their bids.
But they don't watch the ones in the yards, and I've got some in the drainage ditch, so they got to get those.
That's a way for our later contract.
It's not ours.
Yeah.
It's the others.
I'm not sure who is.
It's Wendy does it. They got, I don't know who they subcontracted to, but anyway, I just wanted to see if anybody else had problems.
That they didn't take care of.
Immediately or a year later? Termites are going to get these if they don't hurry up.
I thought he was in trouble.
Yeah, he, he needed to dress up different.
Yeah, yeah. He thought he was getting a ward or trouble or something.
There's one other thing I do want to mention, the Russ House. The Kuplan needs painting.
I brought that up to the Tiffany's.
So. And they said that I, I, I was in there yesterday, and Carlin said that our guys can't get up there. I don't know what the deal is, if they need to run a crane with a a crane or a lift, they need to do something because we can spend a hundred dollars right now painting or we can wait another year and spend four, five hundred thousand dollars fixing.
We didn't have a crane last time. Why didn't we paint it then?
Well, there was a reason, but I can't recall why. I think it was still damaged from the hurricane, and y'all had something. It was tarped or.
It needs to be done. I don't care what the, the problem is. I can see something. And I don't want to climb up there, but I will.
Please don't.
But.
She brought that up. Do we ever think the lighting at the courthouse?
Tyler was working on that. That lighting at the courthouse.
Okay.
Well, that didn't have anything to do with Johnson Controls, the ones they're talking about. Ajax.
Ms. Willam, can you get back to us at the next meeting, let us know what you're going to do on that?
Sure.
I just want it fixed before we spend a sack of money. That is all I have. We got to discuss a couple of things.
It's going to take a minute. I would recommend y'all break.
All right. We, what do we want to take? An hour? Y'all want to be back at twelve? Well, thirty? That sound okay? We're in recess until twelve-thirty.
No, it's a whole separate meeting, so you have adjourned this.
Well, we're adjourned until twelve-thirty, but we're going to do the special meeting with Danielle.
Keep them separate.
Thank you for keeping us.
It's a task.
It takes village. Let's go eat. Yeah, let's go.